Good evening and welcome to the February 3rd, 2022 FY 2023 Proposed Operating Budget Public Hearing. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices and mute their microphones to avoid any technical interference with our meeting. Also, we will be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. Please listen to the following announcement regarding interpretation services during tonight's meeting. Ms. Berkeley, would you please play the recording?
There's no audio.
You cut it off.
My apologies, give me one second, I'm gonna put it back up, my apologies.
Interpreting Services, Servicios de Interpretación. Simultaneous interpretation is available in Spanish. La interpretación simultánea está disponible en español. On a computer at the bottom of the screen will be an interpretation globe. Click that globe and then select Spanish. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. On a mobile device at the bottom of the screen, tap the ellipses icon on the bottom right. Three dots. Tap Language Interpretation, tap Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono de elipses en la parte baja de la derecha. Dos tres puntos. Toque Language Interpretation, toque Spanish. Thank you, gracias.
Gracias. Again, good evening for those who joined us after the presentation. The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public comments on the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. Before we begin receiving our comments from the public, I would like to review our budget timeline. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt the fiscal year 2023 proposed operating budget at its February 24th, 2022 board meeting. The Board of Education's recommended budget will then be forwarded to the county executive, who will develop her proposed county budget and present it to the county council in March 2022. In April, the Maryland State Legislature adopts its final budget, including amounts for school funding. The county council must adopt its budget for Prince George's County by the end of May. The Board of Education, as necessary, reconciles its budget to the county's approved budget and approves it at a regularly scheduled meeting in June. With that, we will have our roll call, Ms. Berkeley.
Thank you. Ms. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Mrs. Amit?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Sharon Ruiz? Mr. Harris? Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present. Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Dr. Golson, would you please introduce your, the budget?
Thank you. And at this time, Mr. Michael Herbisman will give a very brief overview of the fiscal year 2023 budget request.
Thank you.
Evening, thank you, Dr. Golson. During the January 27th Board of Education Public Budget Hearing last week, presented on the CEO's Budget Proposal and the recent revenue changes in the Governor's Budget. That full presentation is PowerPoint is attached in Word docs tonight. And the video of the last presentation is attached in Word docs to January 27th public hearing. So rather than re-present that full presentation, that's already recorded and available, we're just gonna do a brief summary tonight. To go back in December, Dr. Golson presented the FY 23 CEO Proposed Operating Budget to the Board of Education. The $2.6 billion proposal was highly aligned to the Transformation 2026 and the Board of Education budget priorities and Dr. Golson's CEO focus areas. All detail of that proposal is available at pgcps.org/budget in the full budget book. At the time of the proposal, we're still waiting for their guidance on how the blueprint formulas would be enacted. We now have a lot of that information from the Governor's Proposed Budget. And as a result, our unrestricted state funding is $74 million lower than we had projected in the proposed budget. More than 90% of that difference is in two areas. First, the free and reduced price meal counts used for the compensatory education calculations were from October 31st, 2021, sort of a three-year average, which excludes 2020 as they use for the foundation formula and some other areas. This means that the free and reduced price meals application count was for a time when the federal government no longer required the application from families to receive free meals. For that reason, the count is artificially low. And the use of that specific count caused a $44 million decrease in state revenue relative to projections. Second, the blueprints states that the educational effort adjustment will be paid to school districts in FY 2023. And all the information estimates that we've seen over the last couple of years fund this for FY 2023. However, January 21st, we received a memo stating that the state does not have sufficient prior year data to calculate the correct amounts, and therefore, the Governor's Budget did not fund it. That is $25 million of funding included in all previous projections that were cut from this version of the budget. At this point, restoring both the $44 million for compensatory ed and the $25 million for educational effort would require action from the General Assembly in the current legislative session. For that reason, we're currently moving forward, assuming that the interpretation in the Governor's Budget will prevail for both of those. And we are facing unrestricted budget deficit of $74 million for FY 2023. As previously promised, the administration will present during the February 10th Board of Education Public Budget Hearing. And at that time, we will outline recommendations for closing that large budget gap to balance the budget. Thank you, and we look forward to hearing testimony from our students, employees, and community tonight. And I'll yield the floor back to the Board Chair, Dr. Miller.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Herbsman. We will now hear from our 39 registered speakers for public comments. This is the Board's opportunity to hear from the community, so Board members will not address any comments now. You will have three minutes to address the Board. At the end of your time, you may complete that sentence only. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public comment process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for this evening is London Amton, 12th grade student, saving CBC. Is he in the queue?
Yes, London just got promoted to speak.
Do I, do I go?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Good evening, my name is London Amton. CBC has been a pivotal point in my education and life. It gave me a second chance at a bright future, and it gave me hope that I can achieve anything I put my mind to. There was just one English credit that I needed to get, that I needed to get in order to get my diploma, and CBC was the only school that gave me the option to come to school just to take that one class so that I can work my job as well as get my diploma. What I can say is this, I may have just finished my one semester class at CBC, but it was probably the best class I've ever had. And I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not just saying that. Not only are the lessons more in-depth, engaging, and well-thought-out, the classroom sizes are smaller, along for minimal distractions, and more meaningful and thought-provoking class discussions. While the lessons are great, the staff really sealed the deal. Normal public schools have so many students that the administration only remembers a handful. And when major events happen, they don't resonate with the students. They treat them as if they're random people they just met, not at CBC. Here, the staff actually listens to us and bothers to remember each of our names. They boost our morale when we're down and make us feel as if we mean something and that, and, and as if we were actually worth something. To take away this school would be to take away a future scholar opportunity to better themselves in a school that pays close attention to each student's educational journey. If you get rid of such an incredible school, a school that has been helping students like me get a diploma for decades, it will be ruining our chances to succeed. This school helps older students, even the ones that are about to be too old. CBT takes those students that are told it's too late every day, gives them a second, third, maybe even fourth chance. A fourth chance, which should, and watch the dropout rate increase if you close the school down. We don't want to be stuck in some alternative melting pot with a bunch of young kids distracting us from our very important goal to graduate before it's too late. This school works because it's small and because it's specifically focused on older students. We don't have drama here like 9 to 12 schools, so listen to us. We're the ones that are supposed to matter, right? So prove it, save CBC.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Amton. Next, Jacqueline Lumana, 12th grade student, save CBC.
I did not see that person in the queue, so you can move on to number three.
And her son, Lazo, 12th grade student, speaking on behalf of CBC.
Hello, good evening. I'm a fellow student at Community Based Classroom. My name is Anderson Lazo, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the school. The only thoughts that I can think about when it comes to my education at this school are only positive ones. Community Based Classroom has really helped me think more about my future and showed me that life does give second chances, second chances to those who want it. I've developed into a better student and not just that, a better person. The reason I, I became a better student here at Community Based Classroom was because I had nowhere else to go. Knowing this school was my last chance to put my knowledge and skills to good use, I came in giving everything that I got. And it actually worked. I was excelling in all of my classes, and the things that I was learning were actually staying in my head. In doing so, it also helped me realize that I was becoming a better version of myself, a version of me that I would never notice back in my prior school. A typical day at my, at school is quick for me. I feel it so quick because when I come in, I try to focus on all my work and try to finish it in class. I do this in order to go home and not have to worry about any work that is due and later just go to work. That is also another amazing thing that I really admire about Community Based Classroom, that it allows me to have a reasonable schedule to keep my life running smoothly. It's made me work hard on my time, time management, time managements, something I used to do very poorly in. It is very important for future students to attend Community Based Classroom. I would like them to have the same opportunity that I did coming into this school. I believe that everyone deserves a second chance, a second chance for any students to redeem themselves. The one main difference that this school has against any other schools is the teacher's effort to help their students. I'm not saying that my prior teachers didn't do a good job, but they didn't show the amount of effort that teachers here in Community Based Classroom are showing towards me. They really have motivated me to, to learn more and expand my knowledge. So with that, I've decided to go to college. At first, I never wanted to go to college. All I ever really knew of from college was that it was a waste of money. My mindset has changed. Quote, "Knowledge is power," quote, from Francis Bacon. I want to increase my knowledge. I want to know more. I want to fill my brain with knowledge that will open doors in my life that I didn't think possible. The different resources given by Community Based Classrooms are flexible schedules, tutoring every Fridays, and the ability to speak to any adult at any given moment. And the dedication teachers give to helping students into graduating. Community Based Classroom offers a helping hand to anyone willing to reach out and take that hand. I truly believe that Community Based Classroom should remain open and even at some point, expand, become its own school, and continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazo. Semi Aronosha, 12th grade student, keep CBC open. Is Semi in the queue?
Hello. Good evening, my name is Semi Aronosha, and I'm a current student at Community Based Classroom. I came to Community Based Classroom because I wasn't successful in virtual learning. Virtual learning took a great toll on me. During virtual learning, I was at work, and it wasn't really beneficial to me. And Community Based Classroom gave me a second chance to receive my high school diploma and get the help I need, I needed to graduate. If it wasn't for this school, I wouldn't have accomplished my dream of graduating from high school. I would like to tell you what Community Based Classroom did for me and why this school is a great contribution to this community. This school gives me personal help, like having a therapist in the building to help with my bad days where I'm mentally checked out and need someone to talk to and explain my current circumstances and how mental health is bad and it's affecting today's community, affecting today's youth. At the Community Based Classroom, the classrooms are smaller and easier to focus on my task. The teachers at Community Based Classroom, teachers give students like me more one-on-one help when needed, which I was not getting at regular high schools. This school is a great opportunities for those like me looking for a second chance to receive a high school diploma. And for this school to be shut down, it would be very substandard that they cannot get access to help that I'm currently getting with all being.
Is that it?
It seems that she must have gotten disconnected.
Yes, the internet was unstable. If she wants to come back, she can. We're gonna move on to next, 12 Vanfield, 12th grade student, save CBC. Is he in the queue?
Yes, I am.
Wait, you said Mac Mavis?
No, Maxwell.
Okay.
Hello. I'll keep this short and sweet. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maxwell Vanfield. I am a current senior at Community Based Classroom. I have attended CBC multiple times. Each year has been stupendous and productive, to say the least. This year will be my last, but I can honestly say that I will miss the benevolent CBC staff and peers. Since attending CBC, the staff has done nothing but pushed me towards success and accommodate for my life outside of school. Each year that I attended Community Based Classroom, I've had a job. One year, I even had to attend therapy. CBC made sure I prioritize my duties outside of the school as well as in the classroom. Due to most of the work being done in Google Classroom online, it gave me the capability to complete my work at my own pace so I can, so I am not overwhelmed, excuse me. It also gave me the ability to communicate with my peers about the work if I was not able to make it to school or exceedingly late. Another reason why CBC is so great is the entire staff genuinely cares about you and your success. They go out of their way to contact you and communicate in and out of school. Community Based Classroom is a great way for students to have a second chance at prosperity in life to achieve all their goals and dreams.
Thank you, Mr. Vanfield. Mark, I mean Mac Mulvey, 12th grade student, CBC.
Do I have the option of putting my video on? Just a quick question, do I have to do that or? Okay.
You can, you can speak with or without video, it's up to you.
I'll speak with video, I'll see my face, so. Yeah, so, hi, my name is Mike Mavis, and I am a student of Community Based Classroom. I'm here on behalf of CBC to want to basically keep the school open. And I'm gonna be using my own experiences to explain why. So throughout my senior year, I was, I was going through a lot, I was being lazy. I was, since I was online, I was taking advantage of that, basically doing the bare minimum of what I should be doing. And at the end, that cut off to me. I didn't graduate, I messed up, and I was very disappointed in myself. So at that point, it just mentally, just like, I was, I was not in a healthy place at that moment because I really disappointed myself, and I knew I should have done better. So I just decided, you know what, I'm just gonna get a GED later down the line and then figure out a plan later. But my counselor let me do that, my counselor was like, look, I'm gonna give you another chance. There's this program that I know of, Community Based Classroom, that can help you get that credit that you needed, because I only needed half a math credit to get to, get my diploma. And my counselor was just basically begging for me, just like, it's just half a credit, just don't want to do it. So that's, that's basically what I did. The process was simple. It was, I got all my information, it's basically transformed into a homeschool, and they told me the days, they only gave me two days, and they were just very helpful through and through. My teacher was nice, and the program is, I'm very blessed to have a program like this, because if I didn't have something like this, I probably would be in a worse place right now. I'm very grateful for the opportunity that I'm given, especially my counselor, for helping me, being able to have something like this for me to finish my high school career and get that last credit and just not let it be in the dark. I don't want to go for too long, so I'll just say is I would really love for this program to stay. I would hate to see other kids lose opportunity that I had, and I wish that, that this program would stay just to help the kids like me.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mavis. Next is Rita Prince, 12th grade student, CBC shutdown.
I'm, I'm not a student, my daughter was a student at CBC. She graduated 2021, and it was really a last resort for her. She was 19 years old, attended PG County Public Schools. And, you know, because of the distractions, she just lost focus. And she was a star athlete throughout the county from seventh grade all the way until her senior year. She had several HBCUs searching for her. And, you know, she was distracted, made some bad decisions, like most youth do at that time. And she decided to drop out and actually left my home. I just waited for her to get herself together, and she came back and said, Mom, I messed up. I want to graduate. I want to finish my education. What am I gonna do? I'm 19 years old. And I called CBC. I was surprised to see that they were still around because I know people that are 50 years old that went to CBC when the classes were being held in Lanham. And they've made a great life for themselves. But going there, she was, she learned her independence, she stayed focused. She said that all of the students were in the same boat, and everybody was eager to move ahead, to get to the next chapter. And, and so that was part of the support along with the staff. So graduating, she held her head up high. She now works for a board of trustee of one of the HBCUs. And she's excited that she accomplished that in signing on to do classes at PG Community College. But it really gave her her self-esteem, because she thought, I messed up, what am I gonna do? You know, I lost all of this opportunity that you put in place. But that program is needed, an alternative. I worked for MNC PPC for 15 years in a youth program center, and so many households are distracted with so many different things. I was one of them. I graduated from Chrome High School. That was alternative. My household was different. I was raising a little brother at 11. I had a son at 17, and that put me in a great position, and I'm a six-figure wage earner. And my son is also a six-figure wage earner. So this opportunity for students to go feel successful and to know that there is another way. Every day you wake up, there's another day to get it right. And she enjoyed it, loved it, and she brags about it all the time.
Next is Imunga Nwanga, 12th grade student, CBC not closing.
That person was not in the queue.
Okay, Erica, Eric Luna, 12th grade student, CBC.
I just wanted to mention, a few community members have reached out saying that they have been in the queue and have gone back and forth, they haven't been able to remain in the queue. So I don't know if, if they're able to chat whoever's allowing people to come over from being a attendee, but there's been some, I guess, some challenges there.
Well, everybody whose name I've called have been present except the last one. So they've been, as their names are called, they've been admitted into the queue in the order that they've been presented, or the order that they were placed when they called in. So with that, we just finished with Sarita, a princess mother. And now it's Imunga Nwanga. And you say he's not in, that person is not in the queue, Miss, Miss, okay. So then we'll move to Eric Luna, the 12th grade student, Community College, CBC. Eric, we see, I see your name. Are you there?
Yes.
You may speak.
Oh. Good evening. Good evening, my name is Eric Luna. I attend Community Based Classroom. Community, Community Based Classroom are like having another opportunity finishing, finishing high school. For me, for me, for me, it means a way to get a diploma, give yourself another chance to, to do the right thing. It also, also because of teachers and staff. The reason it should not close is because the kids that want to finish high school will really, will really get the help they need from the teachers and counselors and school therapists so they can graduate. There is just no other school like Community Based Classroom. It was, it was also a good choice for me. Community Based Classroom, the precious accounting students, for, for students who need another chance. Community Based Classroom really gave me a different mindset for things in the future. Community Based Classroom really helped me raise my grade of higher than I had expected to be. So honestly, Community Based Classroom would be a great decision for students who need another chance without any reminders of their mistakes from completing high school. And Community Based Classroom was just a different school from others that I attended before in my past, because it really changed the way how I thought about school. I used to think school wasn't, wasn't for me. And then after, after virtual learning, I, I failed my chance to graduate on time. But after looking into another choice, it was for me, Community Based Classroom that took me in. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't graduate on time. Or I wouldn't graduate this year, or I need to graduate this year. But they just gave me an opportunity to just finish my, my achievement that I always wanted to, to give my parents. So I wouldn't think that, I didn't want them to think I didn't try. So Community Based Classroom really helped me change that for the, for the future of mine and really helped me change my thought of what's to come. So Community Based Classroom is a great choice for everyone that wants to finish the, the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Elijah Mud, 12th grade student.
Not in the queue either.
Jakaya Augburn, 12th grade student, saving CBC. I see her name on the screen.
Can you hear me?
Jakaya.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Jakaya Augburn. I'm a 12th grader enrolled at CBC. I currently attend CBC because in 11th grade at the Academy of Health Sciences, I didn't maintain my grades because of the tragic switch from in-person to virtual school. I just kind of gave up during a pandemic virtual learning year. I think back now and remember that CBC wasn't my first choice of a transfer. I wanted to transfer to Flowers High School. I'm so glad I ended up following the recommendation of my previous counselor because CBC has really given me my mojo back. I only had to talk, talk once to the phenomenal counselor at CBC to decide that it's the right school for me. In a few simple words, I was told I received great schooling, and he was telling the truth. to decide that it's the right school for me. In a few simple words, I was told I received great schooling and he was telling the truth. CBC has given me a second chance to prove myself as a student. I take two classes here. And let me tell you, I have one of the best English teachers I have ever had in my high school career. Not only does she push us to be the best, but she also make learning fun. Most importantly, she is there for her students. My math teacher is also one of the kindest people I've ever met and will do anything for his students. Every staff member at CBC wants to be best for the student. I believe this is a great place to come and do better, a place where we can overcome our past mistakes and beat the odds. Our school is not just a school, it's a place of hope and true integrity. Our school has to be here for future students who need extra guidance to be successful. CBC can save so many young people from being a statistic. Don't be the ones who rob the next generation of its hopes and dreams. I, Jakaya Augburn, am proud to say I'll be a twenty twenty-two graduate of community-based classroom. How many more students will get to say this? You decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Jakaya. Next, Jade Mason, twelfth grade student, Save CBC. Is Jade in the queue? I don't see. Jade Mason, twelfth grade. Okay.
Some technical difficulties. It looks like she's trying to take herself on or off mute. Jade, why don't you go out and then come back in and I'll pull you, okay?
So can we go to Gerda S. Theodore, twelfth grade student, Save CBC, Gerda?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
And it's Jirda, luckily, Jirda.
Thank you.
My name is Jirda Theodore and I'm a senior at Community-Based Classroom School. I am here on behalf of the fact that there is some consideration of closing down the alternative high schools. I want everyone here to know that here at this school, we can make a difference and we have plans for the future. I feel as if we are not at an understanding on how important this school is. Shutting it down is respectfully a bad idea. It jeopardizes future students' lives. It may seem like baggage to you and mere trash, but it means everything to us. We won't be silent about it. We won't have random people calling us, telling us you might as well give up and you might as well stop trying because we're not going to stop trying. If we didn't care about this school, we wouldn't be here today at this meeting and we wouldn't have been at the last meeting. We're gonna keep coming and coming every time until we are heard. This school needs to stay open because everybody deserves the opportunity, no matter the situation and no matter what is going on in their life. Not everybody can say that they care for school and not everybody can say that school is not causing stress. Not everybody can say that their school is a home away from home. I refuse to call CBC a program because it is not. It is a school just like everywhere else. It is more than just some building that is just there in the middle of Pittsburgh. Having people tell you that you should just give up on trying to save the school is heartbreaking and is very disrespectful to me. I want to take a stand because this school matters. I honestly feel as if alternative high schools are looked as just a bunch of useless and unnecessary, and unnecessary effort. I didn't come here to diss the board. I didn't come here to dis- disrespect anybody. I didn't come here because somebody told me to. I am here because I genuinely feel like this school needs to stay open. This school is not here for decoration. Where I come from, we say, a sunu pape, a sunu alivé. I mean, together we stand and together we shall rise. I am here, we are here because the school means a lot to me. School means a lot to everybody that goes there. We need to be heard and we will be heard. Do not shut down the alternative high schools because you are shutting down the kids' future. I am Jirda Theodore from CBC. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Theodore. Savannah Manley, twelfth grade student, Community-Based Classroom.
Um, I have, don't have Savannah, but Jade is back. Did you want to?
Yes, please.
Jade, can you unmute yourself now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Speak up, honey.
All right.
Her name, okay, I see it.
I am Jade Mason, a student at Community-Based Classroom. Throughout this endeavor, I have been nothing but kind, humble, patient, and respectful. I share my story in hopes to change minds for the better. Until me and a few other classmates received the call from an unknown number shortly after registering for this meeting. The call went well in the first few moments. She seemed to have been co- calling to confirm my registration. Although this did not happen for last week's meeting, I thought this was kind and thoughtful. After I confirmed my identity with the unknown caller, her tone quickly changed as I felt the aggression in her voice. She said, do not speak at this Thursday's meeting or any future budget meetings. I then asked why not in hopes of receiving a legitimate reason. She stated, it is in your best interest not to speak. I am unaware of the intentions of her call, but I will not stop. You may have your minds made up on the future of Community-Based Classroom. But I will not be silenced. To the woman who called, if you are here, you have only created more hopes for the future of CBC. My classmates and I have taken all the right steps. This incident has done nothing but motivated myself and others to push harder and work together. One of the many things that that I have learned at Community-Based Classroom is patience and determination. I am not sure how things will turn out for Community-Based Classroom. You may take the school, but the lessons will stay with me forever. One in particular is to never give up. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Mason. Uh, Savannah Manley. Is she in the queue?
No, Savannah Manley, Carolina Campos, and Amity Post. Uh, those three are not in the queue. The next speaker following that is in the, in the queue.
Okay, Sarah Schaffer.
Yes, ma'am.
You may speak. Miss Schaffer. If I'm pronouncing it correctly. English teacher, why CBC should be kept in the twenty twenty-three budget and beyond.
Hi, good evening. Tonight, I want to talk about the power of stability and how it can affect learning. To do that, I'm gonna give you just a small glimpse into my own childhood. I was born in nineteen seventy-three at the height of religious cults in America. At three months old, my parents joined one of those cults, the Unification Church, better known as the Moonies. Their life became a brainwashed servitude to a fake god and I became a sacrificial lamb. To make a very, very long story short, my childhood was a senseless blur of abandonment, neglect, bullying, and never-ending chaos. As my parents traveled the country to find new recruits for the movement, we went to one commune after another. And I would attend on average six schools per school year. In third grade, at one of the many schools for that year, the teachers informed my parents that I could not read and would have to repeat the third grade. They had no idea because parenting their children was not a priority and neither was education. Thankfully, my grandmother was not brainwashed and was adamant that I'd be put in a good school and not moved for my repeater year. So that second year of third grade, I was able to stay in one school for an entire year. Being able to go to the same school every day with good teachers and make friends for the first time in my life was miraculous. Just that one year, I had a place to go where I belonged. It was one of the only times I felt safe and happy. The power of that school's safe haven in the midst of a young girl's tumultuous childhood changed everything. I learned how to read, and now I'm an English teacher who instills the love of reading in others. I have trouble with God and for good reason, but I must say, if there is a God, He brought me to CBC. My students and I are kindred spirits. The connection is so powerful and I instinctively know what they need, but now it's time for you to know what they need. They need the safe haven in a world where there may be not any other place they feel safe than at CBC. What will it take for educational leaders to stand up for what's right? At-risk youth do not need so-called bigger and better programs. They need small environments that cater to individual needs. They need exactly what they already have. They need us. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Schaffer. Uh, next is Leah Bats, retired teacher, CBC consideration. Miss Bats. Miss Bats. Is she unmuted?
She's not unmuted, but she has the ability to unmute herself.
Miss Bats. Okay, we're going to move to the next person and when she, then Miss Bats comes in, we will allow her to speak. Crystal Price, Individual Community-Based Classroom. Is she in the queue?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Um, I want to say, just really short, CBC has, has made a huge impact in my life. Um, not only did it give me a chance to pursue college or even have the idea to attain college because I didn't have no intention of going to attending college. Um, I will say that all the ed- all the educators there are superb and that one thing that I have had embarked on in my journey through life has me being a mom and a wife, a soon-to-be wife and everything, is that I gained my independence back. I had a sense of weakness in who I was when I came to the school. No, I was not a bad student. However, I still needed that program. I needed that support to help me along the way, to help me with my journey. And that's what that gave me. And I also had the opportunity to, you know, I'm the first pitcher with the principal of CBC that students see. So I believe that you guys should keep CBC open in order to give students a chance to know that there is always a way to make it through the journey, make it through anything that you want to do in life. Never take no for an answer. So I think you guys should save CBC.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
No problem. Thank you.
Did Miss Bats come back? Okay, um, Trina Brown, Individual Keeping Community-Based Classroom Open. I see her name on screen. Trina Brown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to speak briefly on behalf of uh my experience as a parent. Uh, my son, Native Brown, was a um student at C- CBC last year and he did graduate. Um, CBC, CBC became familiar to us last year. It was recommended from his prior principal when he went to Flowers. Um, my son was in a um life-changing uh motorcycle accident and he had to drop out of Flowers and recover at home for about approximately three and a half, four months. Um, not only did that affect him physically severely, it affected him emotionally and it kind of took the joy out of his future or wanting to even finish school. All of that happened at the same time, then the pandemic hit. Um, CBC was referred to us from his prior principal and we looked into it and found from the very first meeting, um, I felt encouraged and so did my son. Um, there was a orientation by Reginald Russell and he was very comforting in letting us know that the children would have um, one-on-one, if needed, attention and children who were more at risk would get the um attention they needed and deserve. It got really touch and go. At one point, um, there was a lot of meetings, even um, the um Mrs. Sarah uh Schaffler that just spoke, she was actually his English teacher and she never gave up on my son. And it was, um, like I said, a lot of touch and go for a good little while and they, everyone buckled down, including myself, but specifically his teachers, his guidance counselor, the administrators. Everyone, I felt like they just put a circle and held hands around my child. And as a result, we were able to keep his mind and his spirit in the game. And he graduated last year and I don't know. Um, my son is nineteen now, turning twenty, and I really don't know if he would have um gotten his diploma without the help of this school. So I beg of you and implore you to find some money to keep this school open because it touches people's lives in a way that we really, really need it. And they do above and beyond there. And my son has been to a few other schools and I'm gonna tell you, they deserve all of the kudos and um accolades and pats on the back because this school really has made a difference in our lives. So I um I hope you guys reconsider the closure. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Um, Ms. Brown, Michelle Clark. Uh, Individual Employees Salaries and Benefits and Social Emotional Learning.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you. Um, I I've been a little bit out of circulation this year and I'm sure most of you don't know, but I fell at work back in November and slightly uh moved my kneecap off to access. So I have been rehabbing since then. I hope and pray I will be back in school soon. I've been listening to these CBC stories and I didn't intend to speak on it at all, but I was so happy to hear some of the success stories and and I really do wish you, you would do your best to help them out. As far as employees' salaries and compensation benefits, I was so proud to hear that you had some successful stories from CBC where, where the mother and her son are both making six-figure salaries. The first thing that crossed my mind when I heard that is, I don't think I have that potential at this point, even after eighteen years in the profession. Teachers are often, and I know it's not by you, but by many in society, are highly disrespected and not appreciated for the hard work we do. And yet, if there weren't teachers, nobody would be where, nobody who says adults would be where they are today. Somebody helped you. I know in my high school experience, I was a terrible student. I had so many things going on. It was those great teachers who reached out a hand, who encouraged me, who, who taught me to fight. They're the ones that kept me in school. I spent fifteen and a half years from high school graduation to college graduation, but I made it. All because I wanted to be a teacher and I knew I couldn't do that without a college degree. I fear since the time that I've been out, my students haven't been getting the best. A part of it is we have, we don't have the ability right now to attract and retain the best teachers in our school system, partially because of salaries, partially because of benefits, partially because everybody is so overworked right now as we are all understaffed. My co-teacher has had to handle my entire class since I've been out. I'm still doing all the lesson plans for her just because it, it bothers me that my babies aren't getting what they need. I miss them dearly and I wish I could spend my time with them. And just so you know, thank you, Ayesha. Uh, and just so you know, we are dedicated to the profession and we want to do the best, but we have to do something with salaries. There's money in the blueprint. Please do whatever you can to raise our profession to what we, the respect and professionalism that we deserve. I appreciate you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Joseph Wumi. Individual Community-Based Classroom should not be cut.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Wumi. Uh, my son, Michael Wumi, uh, wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately he's working as a CNA after graduating last year from uh Community-Based College. And he's also registered in co- in um, in college right now, also working. CBC, you know, created an environment for my son that no other school, my son, either to before he got to CBC, had gone to about six different schools. My son had a very challenging teenage years, when I mean serious challenging teenage years. And if any of you uh uh have a child who uh who has some challenges as a teenager, when I mean serious challenges as a teenager, uh be very challenging, you will understand that you know, it's difficult for, for schools, regular schools, for them to be um, to be assimilated. you know, it's difficult for, for schools, regular schools, for them to be um, to be assimilated into a regular school. Uh, CBC was the only school after he came out of rehabilitation because he was in rehab, in um I'll, I'll call it rehabilitation, some, you know, Silver Oak, I don't know if you guys know about Silver Oak and Conway, Montgomery County. Uh, those were uh challenging times for both him and us, the parents. But later on, when he came out, all the schools were telling him he had to go through, take all these last classes, I mean, all the sixth classes for the year, and he, he needed just two classes to graduate. Uh, he was uh, a three-point-four uh GPA student. He was, I mean, he's a very smart kid, but because of youth influence, he could not a- accomplish those things. So CBC provided the opportunity, the only place for him to go to graduate, to take those two classes. Uh, we, people like uh, Mr. Russell, Tammy Williams, those guys are the best. My sons went, before then, he went to, uh, what was the name of the school? Flower High School. And he couldn't, he could not, he was not expelled, but could not stay there for two weeks. Because I had another school, another son who was there uh in Flower High School. This Michael, my other son, could not stay there for two weeks. So CBC is not just a learning center, it's not just a school, it's the rehabilitation center, a rehabilitation school for people who either to would not have had the opportunity and chance to graduate like my son. Today, my son, as I speak to you, is caring for, the person is caring, is a highly states uh, the white, former White House official, senior advisor to uh, uh, to uh, John F. Kennedy. That's who my son is caring for as, as we speak. That's why he could not log into this thing. So give it if you give, if you give children chances.
Mister, uh, Wumi, your time is up. Thank you very much. Uh, David Hatcher. Is he in the queue?
No, ma'am. He was not in the queue.
Okay, uh, Jeanette Ramcharan, individual community-based classroom panel.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. My name is Jeanette Ramcharan. I am the parent of Evelyn Terry, who is currently a student at Community-Based Classroom. Her brother, Quinton Terry, is a graduate of CBC Class of two thousand and twenty. I am grateful and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and yet I come before you this evening to express my concern over the possible closing of Community-Based Classroom and possibly other vocational schools. I'm concerned because schools such as Community-Based Classroom are needed within our community. As parents, as a family, as administrators, it is unfortunate that we don't speak positively enough about how everyone is not the same and how some children don't perform at the same level. Each of us have different learning styles. Some of our children may need a smaller classroom setting. They may need a different school schedule because they have to work and to help support the family and survive. There are many different reasons that some of our children may need additional support. And I can tell you, and I know for a fact, that Community-Based Classroom has provided that additional support and that my children need a place like Community-Based Classroom. Our children, they need this. I know for a fact that Community-Based Classroom does their job so well that my son Quinton not only defy the odds of becoming a high school dropout, he is currently overseas in the Philippines, attending the College of Technological Sciences, majoring in automotive studies. He has also acquired his electronic certification from the Tesla Regional Training Center. He has been able to do this because the teachers and administrators at Community-Based Classroom armed him with the knowledge and the support to succeed like they are doing with so many other students. It is an absolute necessity that schools like Community-Based Classroom remain open to help those who are not as traditional per se. When you try to wipe out or shut down something that's helping our children, they end up falling through the cracks. That's when you have the dropout rate increase, that's when you see the crime rate increase. It's also when you see the suicide rate increase due to the lack of support for those students that need alternative options. Again, I implore you to keep our alternative schools open in order to be able to offer different avenues of success for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Ramcharan. Next is Cheryl Fleming, individual reasons why CBC should be kept open. Or should that be closed? Miss Fleming?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Um, I'm the mother of Xavier Smith, who is a senior at Community-Based Classroom. Um, I must say that when I heard that CBC may be closing its doors permanently, I was appalled. I couldn't believe it, let alone the reasons behind it. My son Xavier previously had attended a school whose staff could care less about his students' learning, not to mention graduating. His overall experience was terrible. I can go on and on about the many mishaps that changed my son's desire to learn and attend school, but I won't. Xavier's older brother, who also attended and graduated from CBC in two thousand and fifteen, reminded me of this school. Once CBC administration took a chance on Xavier by accepting him, his overall attitude towards school change. He went from failing classes at the previous school to honor roll at his present school, Community-Based Classroom. Every day, he would come home more motivated than the day before, always praising how CBC's staff members were so patient and caring in their teaching, in their teaching methods. Also, his ability to remain focused with no distractions and get the one-on-one help he sometimes needed. CBC has changed the lives of not one, but both my sons. I ask that you reconsider in your plans to permanently close its doors. I personally feel that a lot of students who may be going through similar or worse situations my son Xavier endured would miss out on what CBC has to offer. I think that these students should be given the opportunity to achieve their high school diploma from CBC so that they might, they might be able to carry on and become that successful additional to society and their community, as my son will. I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Miss Fleming. Rodrick Johnson. Uh, individual maintaining a community-based classroom. Rodrick Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm actually a physical education teacher. Um, at CBC, it is my second assignment in the evenings. Um, I would like to touch on um, ma- keeping CBC open from two, two points of view. One is from an emotional and or anecdotal um, point of view. As a recipient of an educational second chance myself, um, I relate to a lot of my students and their reasons for being at CBC. They're not all necessarily discipline problems, however, you know, their reasons for being there range, you know, from, on the entire spectrum from, you know, just having to work or, you know, pregnancy. And I've had one student, oh, um, a few years ago, who her anxiety was so bad that she could not function normally in a traditional high school setting. And because we have that relationship, it makes, it makes teaching a lot easier. Uh, it makes their learning a lot easier because it's easier for us to build that relationship. And as we all know, building relationships is highly important. Um, it's a, it's a critical component to our students' learning. And from an instructional standpoint, I do believe that CBC might be the ultimate differentiated instruction because it does offer an alternative environment for students to learn in. As we all know, we do not all learn the same way, at the same rate, you know, in the same environment. And thank you. At CBC, you know, because there are smaller classrooms and there, the teacher-student ratio is so much lower, it does allow us to, the opportunity to again, build relationships and offer individualized instruction, support and accountability. And I believe that going forward, if CBC was to remain open, I hope it does. I hope you reconsider um, closing it. But there are so many future students who will benefit from the environment and the, the environment at CBC and the passion with which, you know, all of the staff and faculty and staff there have and that we put into our students. So, again, um, I've enjoyed my time there and I hope to continue to, you know, do my part to keep these students on the right path. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Wendella Bab, individual community-based.
Yes. Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Wendella Bab. I'm a proud PG CPS parent and an English educator. I'm kindly asking that the community-based classroom school remain open. As a former immigrant coming from the Caribbean, as a child, I can relate to some of the students at Community-Based Classroom. When we first arrived here, my siblings and I were placed in very large settings. It was a very frightening and intimidating experience. My siblings and I, we struggled academically for a very long time. The different spellings, the different pronunciation of some of the words made us froze when it came to speaking and writing. And because of this, we struggled academically. We thought about many times, my siblings and I, how we could return to our home country where we felt accepted and being able to relate to other people. After a while, our parents realized that we were struggling academically. And it was suggested that we, we transfer to a smaller setting with fewer students, as in the case of the Community-Based Classroom School. After a while, in that new environment, we were able to socialize with our peers and we welcomed the individual attention of the teachers so that we were able to improve our studies. Many of the students at the Community-Based Classroom remind me of my educational experiences when I first arrived in the United States of America. The setting there allows those students, like myself, to free, feel free to express themselves and to socialize in smaller settings, to share knowledge, to share uh words and to be able to help each other. So that when we, so when they're able to integrate into the larger educational setting or work setting, they feel more confident to express themselves, whether it's in speaking or writing. My, I'm just imploring everyone to please, please continue to keep the Community-Based Classroom School open so that we can teach these students in smaller settings, students like myself, who are immigrating to the United States of America, so that they too can become PG CPS proud like I am, and I'm able to claim that without any reservations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. Xena Whitworth, Whitworth Solutions Fund, CSTEM for alternative programs and theater uh, patterns.
Peace and purpose, everyone. My name is Xena Whitworth and I'm a former student, proud parent and current proud teacher at Charles Herbert Flowers and Community-Based Classroom. I'm about to put on my debate hat and speak really fast because what I intended to speak about, I can't speak about now. Thank you for Mrs. Mrs. Bass for speaking up for the foreigners in this country. We do suffer in these public schools and we are ignored and we are the underserved. Thank you, Michelle Clark, for reminding everyone that everyone would not be where they are without a teacher. I've been working for twenty-five years on this plantation and still have not earned six figures. Thank God, I'm not doing it for the money, but for the love of children. Give the teachers livable wages and bonuses. We are the richest county for minorities. The salary should reflect. If you have money left over, let me buy my way out of this plantation. Black Lives Matter and thank this board for supporting Black Lives Week of Action in, in all schools. I would like to share a scripture with you. Matthew nineteen fourteen. Jesus said, "Let the little children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to such as these." We are the children. We are the children, the principals, the teachers and the students. We have the right to come and speak on behalf of the institutions that have helped and, and harmed us at the same time. Jay, I hear your pain, your trauma when exercising your right to be proud of your school. No wonder no one speaks at these meetings. Bullying, harassment, intimidation are key words when working in the product of a systemic, institutionalized racist society. To the caller of Jay, call me. The county should be pleased to produce such brave and passionate speakers who love their school and the staff that teaches them. The district should not be afraid to hear the stories of truth of the, out of the client's mouth. It is not okay to bully, harass, intimidate, or interfere with a child's First Amendment rights. When I heard a student tell me that someone called and told her not to speak at tonight's meeting, I was not surprised when I heard the disturbing news. I too have received mysterious phone calls in the past and phone calls of such intimidating matters exist in the county. It is traumatizing. As a victim, I'm, I have learned to put my trust in God and let him lead me to that rock. I'm gonna skip past and get to where I really came for. I have learned that now is the time to put what you'd like to see on the table for all to hear. I came here originally to request funding for CSTEM to be in all schools with ignored, underserved population. We can't end the prison pipeline, but we can create a system, a CSTEM pipeline in order to get young people as early as kindergarten to start being engineers and work on real-life solutions. Then I heard about I still have five seconds before you said time. I have time still. Then I heard about the consolidating of the alternate schools and had a flashback of when Maryland's tomorrow, Northwestern, Crawford and Largo experienced the same fate. I am requesting additional funding for CBC and to restore the building back to fully and fully funded and occupied for alternative students. The teachers and leaders have to work extra hard to instill CBC's pride in spite of being pushed into dark, cold spaces to learn. Let's provide solutions and add programs and money to fund programs that would help students choose pathways that lead to purpose. We need to fund our schools. We need to support our teachers and we need to love our children and remind ourselves without none of, without none of them and none of us, none of us would be there. Last, can Charles Herbert Flowers get what they need to open up unoccupied, unused temporaries so children can learn in a safe place? Thank you for listening and bless everyone in this call. I'll say.
Thank you, Ms. Whitworth. Lisa Burnham, individual climate wages and nutrition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Burnham. I'm a district nine resident, AAP TSA member, and I have a daughter in Akakeak Academy. And it's so critical that we have opportunities to weigh in on how we're prioritizing investments in the infrastructure that supports our I believe we need to make sure that the board's climate priorities are fully funded, which includes establishing a sustainability office to see the implementation of those climate priorities. Additionally, we need a position that can oversee the overall fiscal integrity of the contracts executed in the process of implementing retrofits for better weatherization, energy. We need to reassess the current contracts with food vendors and seek new relationships with vendors. Can you hear me? There's got a message.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. New relationships with vendors that will provide more nutritious, healthy foods to our students. Currently, what children, our children are eating is subpar. I'm sorry.
You may want to turn your camera off and finish speaking.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, I'd like, I'd also like to see greater investment in tutoring and building out our virtual learning infrastructure because we won't be returning. Miss. And I am, I, I hear you all just fine, but you can't hear me. You're not hearing me.
You're going in and out.
Okay, I, I can't control that, but I'll keep, I'll keep talking.
Okay, you have a minute, a minute left.
Um, I hope you would give me back some time since there are technical difficulties. Uh, every educator knows. Yeah, our teachers and support staff need significant investments in their salaries. They need a living wage. Administra, administrative staff are being paid more than those who actually carry out the work of teaching. Every educator knows and every study confirms that early education is important, but our early education teachers are paid the absolute least. This needs to change. Their classrooms need teaching assistants. Plus students. At the end of the fiscal year, leftover money should be given to teachers so they can purchase adequate supplies for their classes. And lastly, I was unaware of the fight to keep CBC open. I think our bright and courageous young leaders and educators, excuse me, for educating all of us on the invaluable role this school has played and must continue to play in so many lives. I stand. Open. It's also worth noting that the class size of CBC is small and these students are able to get significantly more or were able to get significantly more individual care and thoughtful attention than what they'd otherwise have. This is an insight we should take into consideration for school and class sizes overall across Prince George's County. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Burnham. Um, Joseph Jakuta, Climate Parents of Prince George's uh, sustain, sustainability.
Uh, good evening, Chair Miller, Vice Chair Williams, the Board and CEO Goldson. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Joseph Jakuna. I'm the lead volunteer of the Climate Parents Prince George's Campaign for Clean Energy Schools and a proud PG CPS dad. I've been honored to work so hard over the past ten months with PG CPS staff, elected officials and other advocates to help plan for PG CPS's climate future. We have learned that many of the areas that need improvement not only will not only make our air or the air our children breathe cleaner and help the climate, but also result in long-term savings for the school system savings then can help with long-term education budgets. I come tonight with two specific requests for inclusions in the FY twenty-three budget. One is to include a new position for the, in the FY twenty-three budget of a Sustainability slash Resiliency Officer. This position would work directly with the CEO and the implementation of a crosscutting of the Climate Action Plan that is nearly done with drafting. Issues raised can only be solved when various departments work with each other and having a Sustainability Resiliency Officer will help with that. And we have found that numerous improvements to reduce emissions will also save money in the short term and long term and make school infrastructure more resilient will lead to less costly repairs and replacements. We also hope you include funding for energy and water monitoring systems. Having sensors on key energy and water systems and a monitoring system that tracks them centrally will pay for itself in allowing maintenance staff to be aware of problems and buildings well before they otherwise would. For instance, if a pipe leaks, it will not get caught until the end of the month when the bill is seen. But being able to catch it right away will mean less natural resources wasted in terms of energy and water use and taxpayers' dollars that won't literally get flushed down the drain. And also will allow maintenance staff to be able to accomplish more with less. I urge you to include those two items in your FY twenty-three budget, that of a Sustainability Resiliency Officer and energy and water monitoring systems. I also wanted to add one other thing after hearing all of the folks talk about CBC. Um, there's a personal note, um, I, though I've never, do not have a specific relationship with CBC in my younger days, I was lucky enough to substitute teach in Austin, uh, Texas. And during my time there, um, my favorite place to go was the, the independent school. Um, hearing the, the stories that were told tonight brought me back to when I was working with the students there. Every day when I would get the call to go to that school instead of one of the regular high schools, I would be, I would be right on my bike going there. So I, I, I hope you uh, heed their words and also, uh, I support what they were saying this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Jakuta. Uh, Orlando Batong Bakal. Teacher Community-Based Program.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board and to all who are here. I am Orlando Batong Bakal, a fourth-year math teacher at Community-Based Classroom. One of the reasons why we are here tonight is that we want our students to be successful. That is our common denominator, our common goal of providing our students an environment where they can be successful and thrive. CBC is one of the schools in the district that provides students with the opportunity to be successful. As you already know, CBC provides small class sizes and flexible schedules, which is unique in the district. The teachers and staff meet the students where they are. And we can do that because of the unique educational model that I mentioned to with small class sizes and flexible schedules. The data shows that the, that the graduation rate as well as the attendance rate of CBC in the last three school years are both above ninety percent. In twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen school year, the graduation rate is ninety-three point ninety-four percent and the attendance rate is ninety-one percent. In twenty nineteen to twenty twenty school year, the graduation rate is ninety point six percent and the attendance rate is also ninety-one percent. Last school year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, the graduation rate is ninety-five percent. Attendance rate, ninety-three percent. Distinguished members of the board, the data do not lie. CBC's educational model works. The model is unique and it works. If we have something that is unique and working, we do not eliminate it. We replicate it. Example is the Maryland Eagle. That is unique and beautiful. Those in position like you enacted laws to protect them, to preserve them, to provide them with an environment where they can thrive. Distinguished board members, I appeal to you. Preserve CBC. Replicate it if you may, but please do not close it. Please continue to provide our at-risk youth an environment where they can thrive. Thank you very much for your kind attention to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Batong Babal. Stephanie Jenkins, Individual Community-Based Classroom.
She was not in the queue.
Okay. Um, Carolyn Jaeger, Individual Alternative High Schools. Ms. Jaeger.
Good evening. Good evening.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We all have a story and a journey. Walk with me as I share mine. I am a proud Prince George's County Public School educator and the blessed mother of two successful Prince George's County Public School graduates. As a child, I can vividly remember at the age of twelve proclaiming to my parents that I'm going to help people. Wow, at twelve years old, I knew what my assignment was and is. I can also fondly remember for those of you who are familiar with the culture of the DMV going to the park at National Airport with my parents and siblings to watch the airplanes depart and land on family outings. While sitting on the top of my parents' hood of our electric blue station wagon, AKA old-school minivan, eating Ritz crackers, cheese and drinking bottled water, it was in these moments that my parents were strategic and intentional about imparting into each one of us a sense of purpose, wisdom and venture, education, traveling, serving and a love for life that has surpassed time and lives on in our children, our grandchildren, our students to be for generations to come. My dad would often say on outings at National Airport, "Do you know that you are moving right now and you don't realize it?" Right now, the earth is speeding around its axis at a thousand miles per hour. You're moving at such a fast pace that every twenty-four hours, the earth is making a complete rotation or turn around the sun. Carolyn, you are moving at a very fast pace. I often share with my great students as my parents shared with me. You are moving and you don't even know it. You're moving so fast that you don't even know it. Regardless of whatever you may have felt or whatever you feel, life does not have the power or the gravitational pull to keep you where you are. This is what I tell my alternative ed students because things have already been set in motion. The sun is coming up in the morning. After all, you and I have moved sixty-seven thousand miles per hour, which is one point five million miles through space in a twenty-four-hour period, but it doesn't feel like it. It doesn't feel like it because it's hard. It doesn't feel like it because you may have failed. But guess what? You're gonna get up and you're gonna succeed. Why is this important, you say? It is important because every day, as an educator, a facilitator of knowledge, I have an opportunity to provide our students with a nurturing environment where they have an opportunity to thrive, feel safe and strategize for the future as they pledge to be enrolled, enlisted, employed and/or entrepreneur upon graduation. For everyone has a purpose. If there ever comes a time when a student or anyone feels stuck or if you cannot make it, I say, look up because you have been brought a long way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I just have one sentence to end?
One more sentence.
Thank you for your grace. Alternative education students are not going anywhere. Let us continue to serve our students with grace and excellence with individualized instructions uh, from a perspective of equity and excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Theodore Trice, individual testimony of my experience with Tall Oaks. Mr. Trice.
He was not in the queue.
Kimberly Taylor, Individual Alternative Schools.
Uh, good, good evening, everyone. Um, and thank you for this moment. Uh, really, I have the wrong topic, but it was to save the CBC, um, as it is an alternative school environment. Um, very briefly, hopefully everyone will remember this statement when I am done. Count the cost of the cuts. Count the cost of the cuts. I'm coming to you tonight with a very, um, unique perspective. I am a former federal parole officer and I also am a former educator with Prince George's Public Schools, having left, um, at the end of last year. Enjoyed my time there. What led me to, um, go into education is because I know anecdotally and factually about the prison-to-school pipeline. I left, uh, probation and parole because I had young uh, charges who told me had someone saved them in high school, had someone taken time with them in high school, they perhaps would not have made those choices. Um, in going over some facts today, it is very clear, um, the budget concerns of the state of Maryland as they pay an additional thirty thousand dollars per year more than it does to take to educate our children. Thirty thousand. So right now, it costs forty-four thousand dollars to incarcerate, while PG County more or less in total are about fourteen thousand dollars. So that already clearly tells you where our priorities are. So as the board, as the community, we are the last front line to something that is inevitable. Also, I took upon me to look up where Maryland's standing is with that incarceration rate. We have surpassed Mississippi, which formerly was number one for decades. However, we now have the highest incarceration rate. Again, this board is, your, your decision-making with that budget, you're going to be the final straw. Um, anecdotically and truthfully, if alternative students are not serviced properly, they do have three options. They can be homeless. That's going to cost us more. They're going to have children and be on our social doors. That's going to be costly and of course incarceration, and that's going to be costly. So the few dollars or the few pennies that we're going to save by closing this building, by closing out this program, by readjusting it or whatever the terminology is going to be, uh, this is going to cost us more as taxpayers. So I would challenge us all to think of it a little bit more pointedly because your tax dollars are going to be used. They will, but where do you want it to be used? I would prefer that we teach trained uh, persons to get the six-figure salaries and add to our tax rolls as opposed to us caring for them. Also, finally, um, just to make mention of, um, information, also Maryland has the wonderful distinction of, um, having a high rate of eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds being incarcerated. So I just want us to choose wisely and count the cost of the cuts.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. You do too, dear. Philomena Awona, Individual Facility. And Maya Angelou French Immersion.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Goldson, educators, students and community stakeholders. Budgets are equity instruments and they show the priorities of an organization. I'm here to say that my students are not feeling prioritized when they are sitting in their winter coats because there is no heat in my classroom or when they are squeezed into a tiny classroom. I'm an elementary school reading teacher, um, from Maya Angelou French Immersion IB World School. Since I last addressed the board, I've had no updates on the heating problem in my classroom. Again, the root of that problem is beyond the capital improvement project, what the capital improvement project did in updating the HVACs. By the way, HVACs that don't really work because we are either burning up in a hot sauna or freezing in a freezer. I'm asking that this board considers providing a new building for Maya Angelou French Immersion IB World School. Immersion programs are a huge asset to this county. In our two hundred and eight schools, our students speak a hundred and sixty-five languages and come from a hundred and forty-seven, uh, countries. Our students have gone on to work in the State Department and other prestigious departments and institutions. But my, um, immersion programs serve us in more than just learning new languages. They address equity issues, build healthy identities and promote a sense of belonging. Currently, in our old retrofitted facility, which was built in the nineteen fifties, we have no space. In a few weeks' time, we've had floodings that have not only damaged properties and resources, but have also led to the loss of students' instructional time. Instructional time that is critical and impacts students' achievement, especially in an era of over, overtesting and little instructional time. In addition, being put in in a COVID environment means allowing for proper ventilation. But I can't even open my window to air out the small overcrowded room that I occupy, knowing that it is freezing outside. We have no heat and my students could get sick. I understand that the upcoming budget will not include a new building next year for Maya Angelou, but I'm simply asking that this board, I'm simply asking this board to expediently consider fully funding my school by moving us up for a new building. As educators, we are proud of the work that we are doing in preparing our scholars for leadership on the global front, but we need a county's help in prioritizing that work. Maya Angelou French Immersion needs a new building. February is African-American Reading Month. Please read a diversity book daily to a child as we also celebrate Black History month this, uh, month. Thank you. And before, I want to say I send in solidarity with all of the speakers who have gone before me for, um, in support of the, um, community schools. Please consider that. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Goldson, for the awesome job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Awona. Kevin Harris, and I was just, I just received a message that, uh, Mr. Hatcher, who came earlier, unable to get in. So, Mr. Hatcher, I will finish calling the last two and I will come to you at the end, if that's okay. Kevin Harris, keep the schools.
Need to keep the schools, honestly. I can't, I can't even fathom how disgusted I am in hearing how these children are just so adamant about keeping the education and feeling empowered and feeling just hopeful that they have a better tomorrow, that someone actually believes and puts a pat on their back and really utilize their minds. A lot of these people, a lot of these kids, just like me, dropped out or had situations at home that weren't able to keep going and be academically on par with most of their peers. and be academically on par with most of their peers. And just like me, he dropped out because he felt so self-conscious and just unaware that his teachers didn't care about his grades. His teachers told him that he wouldn't be enough. These kids have finally found a place where they can learn and be together. Just so many of my peers now as adults are incarcerated, deaf, addicts, because they weren't able to focus in school because of things in their backgrounds going on at home. This PG schools, as in Duval, it just really didn't care, really didn't show that much concern about what's going on and, you know, passing the next, the next, uh, student on because, you know, oh, just whatever, it's cool, you know? It's just, I'm, I'm just sick and just to see the reflection, just see the faces that everyone has on this board like, next, okay, that's great. It's just, it hurts my heart and I pray for these kids and I pray for their futures and I pray that this, this budget actually hones in these children in the future and actually wants to build up from Maryland because PG already has a rep for not being the most academically on par with most of the other counties. But we're one of the most richest black counties. It's disgusting, it's sad, and it's just, it just hurts my heart, honestly. As a black man, following into a month about black history, a lot of scholars and people who are educated and fought for their education and done these things, we still just set aside the little people, the ones that are trying, the ones that have so much on their shoulders and their backs. But I bid you guys a farewell. Um, I appreciate you allowing me to be on stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Reverend Dr. Clark, The Whole Budget.
Mister, excuse me, Reverend Doctor is not in our queue.
Kristy Lynch, Academics.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristy Lynch and I'm a special education teacher here in the county. I come to you this evening to address my concerns about how we are providing instruction to our students here in the county. As a middle school math teacher and a special educator, I have the opportunity to work with students with various learning styles and adolescent behaviors and so forth. And it's no secret that middle schools have struggled for many years, try, with students trying, uh, to determine who they are. Uh, and as a school system, we struggle with determining the best ways to promote academic achievement to these students who are in the middle. They're trying to figure out their identity, where they fit in with their peers. They want to be seen. They want to have a voice. They want to be validated. It's an awkward period in their lives and many of you may remember that particular time in your life. Some have adverse childhood experience and live in dysfunctional living situations by no fault of their own. Sometimes they express themselves through anger or rage, and at other times they may withdraw and seek to be invisible. Each day, we fight to impress the importance of education on students who are not in that headspace. And so while there was all this talk about discontinuing alternative schools and alternative programs, I ask that you consider alternative schools as not being expendable, but as a way to address the needs of diverse learners. It can be a breath of fresh air for students that need less crowded classrooms and more personal attention. We are still using twentieth-century education models in the twenty-first century. We cannot fit these round pegs in square holes. Many of these students are struggling academically are doing so because we have not been innovative and forward-thinking. Our students and educators deserve better. Our students are more than capable of academic excellence, given the right learning environment. We are cycling students in and out of classrooms, knowing that they are unable to focus and soak in these lessons that are being presented to them. We need more, not, not less, but more alternative settings where our students are able to get the social, emotional help that they need. Whether you do it within a school, within a school, or with a school with smaller classroom status, whatever you do, they need to be able to, uh, get into the mental state that makes them available to learning. Instead of pushing teachers and administrators harder with more scrutiny, ease the heavy lift by creating learning opportunities based on students' needs. We can't keep doing the same thing, thinking we're gonna get a different result. It would be a great disservice to strip our students of this opportunity to learn the way they learn best. The pandemic has exacerbated the problem and we need to face this and know that now is not the time to roll back, but to ramp up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. And now, Mr. David Hatcher. Is Mr. Hatcher in the queue?
Yes, I'm here, ma'am. Thank you so much. Uh, I'm a graduate of Community-Based Classroom. Um, and this school gave me a chance that I needed to get out of a hole that I was in to move in a better direction in life. Uh, CBC is a school of second chances. Um, I was attending a large high school before this, before CBC had bad influences. A lot of things not getting me in the right way that I needed to go. And sitting down with Mr. Russell and my staff there and just kind of seeing, you know, my own mother crying just out of things that I did, making her feel like she wasn't the best parent that she could have been. Uh, made me at that school, amongst other things, really get to a point where almost every quarter I had a four-point-oh master ceremony, graduated two thousand and fifteen, and I really can't thank that school enough. I hope you guys really reconsider and just look at the impact that Dr. Williams and her staff there have on the students that walk in those double doors every day. Um, just like myself and, uh, focusing on graduating. Uh, the teachers care very much so about the students. Um, and even themselves, they take pride in what they do. So I'm a walking proof of that. I just hope you guys can, uh, see that and just take heed and look into this a bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Ms. Berkeley, did anyone else come into the queue who was supposed to speak?
No, ma'am. I just, I just did a check of all those that were, uh, whose names we called and they weren't there at the time, and that was the last of them.
Well, okay, thank you then. Thank you for, to everyone for participating in our second, uh, FY twenty-twenty-three Operating Budget Hearing. This concludes the February third, twenty-twenty-two FY twenty-twenty-three Operating Budget Public Hearing. Our final, our final, uh, FY twenty-twenty-three Operating Budget Public Hearing will be held on Thursday, February tenth, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. Be sure to check Board of, the Board of Education's webpage for more details. Thank you and have a good evening and we will be signing off at eight thirty-eight PM. Be safe.
Good evening.
Good night.